Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Porzo ISD Board of Trustees for this state, May the first, 2023, 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a form of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Lyanna Martinez, Mr. Jason Savota, Ms. Mama Reed, Mr. Steven Shadrock, Mr. Marshall Clear, and Mr. Craig Moots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. I will now lead us in prayer, followed by Mr. Clear leading the process. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity we've been given today to serve you. Father, we pray that you'll continue to bless our school district. Lord, bless Dr. Gilstrap as he leads us and guides us and directs us, give him wisdom and guidance and direction in all decisions that need to be made. Father, we thank you for the staff, for the teachers, for those, Lord, that work long hours in our schools to make our students better students. So, Lord, we thank you for them, and, Lord, thank you, Lord, that you will just continue to bless them, put a hedge protection around our schools, around our community, and, Lord, we give you praise today in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. On the day of Christ's life, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Ms. Reed will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is, "FISD committed to the development of innovative and lifelong learners, possesses character traits to achieve personal and professional success."
Now, Mr. Shadrock will recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, and strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin of reciting our FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, "In FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment."
Families are welcome, partners in your children.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and trust and ethical support of all stakeholders.
Ms. Martinez will now recite our overview of our governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting honor and conduct. I will tell the truth, I will share my views while working for consensus, I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the Board, I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or how it's favor. Our good governance indicator for this month is, "The Board has a written plan in place for regular review and adoption reaffirmation of the district's mission, vision, beliefs, and goals."
We have some recognitions now for Porzo ISD teachers and parent professionals of the year. Dr. Gilstrap?
Yes, we want to start this evening, do it a little bit different than what we've done in the past, so each month, this year, we did recognize a teacher and two students from each campus each month, and so for the month of May, what we want to do is, we want to recognize our teacher and parent professional of the year from each campus. So, this is obviously an honor that's been voted on by their peers, and so we want to start it off today with Dr. Farnsworth from the high school.
Dr. Gilstrap, President Odom, and governing board members, I just want to introduce to you our two fantastic members that are going to be recognized tonight. So, on my left hand is Ms. Korzekwa, she's our FHS Teacher of the Year. She's been in the education training pathway, which is a CTE class, she's a Florisville grad, and even did her final semester of student teaching at FHS. She attended Texas A&amp;M San Antonio where she earned a double Bachelor of Arts in English and History, and she has helped us out in the English department this year, working with test prep. Ms. Korzekwa has worked diligently to take a somewhat neglected program and turn it into a well-rounded, highly accountable program that is producing future quality teachers. Ms. Korzekwa's students love being in her class, where she uses real-world examples and hands-on work for her students to be engaged in the learning. She values building honest and sincere relationships with her students, she also resurrected the TAFI Program, the Texas Association of Future Educators, which I think you all have a t-shirt that she brought. I think she made you wear it. You didn't have a choice. Through this program, she has a student that will compete at the national level. Ms. Korzekwa is married, has three children, she's very outgoing, and there's never a dull moment when Cassie is around, and she is a highly valued member of FHS, and I always have to watch my back when I'm next to her. Ms. Dillard, Ms. Julie Dillard, has the best job in the high school. She is also a FHS alumni, class of 2006, and she's been an employee with FISD for six years. The last four at the high school, Julie is the attendance clerk at FHS. She's here for kids 100%, she loves interacting with kids and hopefully making a difference in their lives, she invests in kids that she knows are struggling to meet the attendance requirements, and she personally reaches out to them. She encourages them when they need it and praises their accomplishments. She loves to be there for kids who just need to vent, and she is always ready with a high-five or even the smallest of wins, like making it on time to class, which can be challenging. Despite being on the receiving end of many not-so-nice phone calls, Julie always has a great attitude and a smile for everyone who goes by her window. I don't think I've ever seen you have a down day, she's always super positive. Julie received a Florisville Fab Award nominated by Ms. Carter, and this year she was the FHS's Support Staff Person of the Year. Please know that FHS staff and students alike appreciate all of what Julie does for us and her efforts, do not go unnoticed, she is very special.
Ms. Dillard, Ms. Korzekwa, if y'all could wait right over here, we're going to get the rest of them, we'll take a big group picture. Y'all wait right over there. Thank you, Dr. Farnsworth. We want to move on now to Holden Barrett from Florisville Middle School. That one will do that.
Good evening, School Board, President Odom, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Gilstrap, and Community. Florisville Middle School, we have a couple of employees that we brought up tonight to recognize, and when selecting these employees, there were a couple of groups of people that we talked to. We talked to students first, then we talked to their colleagues, then we talked to their administrators. Our Teacher of the Year that we have is Ms. Erin Ashenbeck, and when speaking with students, one of the characteristics that kept coming to the top with her was that she was just calm. Students frequently referenced her as being calm, patient, very kind with them, compassionate, and that's something that you could see every day on campus with Ms. Ashenbeck. When talking with her colleagues, the key word that kept coming up with the colleagues was that she's a team player. She's a team player, she's dependable, she's consistent, and she's always there for the team. For me, one of the things that was most important to me from Ms. Ashenbeck this year was that she was dependable. She was dependable, she was flexible, she was there when we needed her. She would do anything that we needed of her without any complaining, she was one of those employees that was just there for us consistently, which really was one of her outstanding characteristics that, when looking at her through the administrative perspective, makes her a Teacher of the Year for us. In her classroom, she's frequently engaging in various activities with the students, she's an art teacher, she has a very student-centered instructional model going on in her class, which means they're doing a lot of projects, a lot of hands-on activities, and the kids just look forward to going to her class and love going to her class. Ms. Ashenbeck, we just want to thank you again for the year of service that you've given us and just the high-quality teacher that you are. For our Paraprofessional of the Year, we have Ms. Michelle Irvin. Ms. Michelle Irvin has worked with us, this is her first year at Florisville Middle School as our paraprofessional, and she's just done an outstanding job for us. She has filled in in various aspects, she's actually stepped in and taught for us for about six weeks, we had a coach who was on leave of absence, and she stepped into that position and just really delivered high-quality instruction to those students, picking up where he left off teaching. Did an excellent job for us, again, as an administrator, one of the biggest characteristics that Ms. Irvin gives us is that she's there. We had to transport an employee today, the first person stepping up to the plate who was like, "I'll go with you," was Ms. Irvin. Again, she's dependable, she's consistent, she fills in wherever we need her, she even fills in as our receptionist up front. Those are the things as an administrator, as a school, those are the things we look for, and those are the things that benefit our campus and benefit our students. So, Ms. Irvin, I know the kids love you, I know staff loves you, we love you, thank you for your service that you've given us this year.
(Applause) Ms. Ashenbeck, Ms. Irvin, thank you very much for your service. We get y'all to wait right over here, so we want to get a group picture once everyone's been introduced. So, next we have, looks like it's going to be Florisville North Elementary, Ms. Heather Brooks, for our Teacher and Parent of the Year from North Elementary.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom. It is my pleasure to introduce the Teacher and Parent of the Year from North Elementary. First, I'd like to introduce our Paraprofessional of the Year, Ms. Kimberly Ramsey. Ms. Ramsey is a 15-year veteran of FISD and has held several positions, including being a paraprofessional in the Science Lab, ISS, Special Education, and Redirect Unit. Now, she is the Gateway to Books at North Elementary as the library facilitator. She told me, "When a student says, 'I don't like to read,' I know that's my opportunity to change their outlook. By speaking with students and learning their interests and passions, I can make recommendations to books that will continue to grow the curiosity and excitement within them. The true gift, however, is when I see their smiling faces and can hear the excitement in their voice when they tell me all about what they have just finished reading." Ms. Ramsey's passion for her job shines through each day as she provides engaging lessons and hopes to make the school more enjoyable for students. Ms. Ramsey fosters student autonomy in the library through choice boards and self-checkout. She also sponsors book club and coordinates book fair and family night. Students say Ms. Ramsey is respectful and expects all students to treat each other with kindness. Colleagues describe her as a hard worker and someone who is always willing to lend a hand. Congratulations to Ms. Ramsey, Florisville North Elementary's Paraprofessional of the Year. (Cheering) Also, for 33 years, Ms. Genevieve Rodriguez has worked to provide a foundational education for our youngest students in pre-K through 3rd grade. Florisville ISD has been blessed to have her for the last 17 years, as she has helped to build the district bilingual and dual-language programs. Ms. Rodriguez, or Mama Jen, as she is known to her team, is a teacher's teacher. She positively collaborates with her grade level and dual-language teams to design instructions specifically tailored to the needs of students, whether that be translating activities, finding resources, or creating learning experiences. Her team says, "Mama Jen is a true leader. She ensures that we are kept on track and up to date with changes. She wants what's best for all students and strives to make sure that both gen-ed classes and dual-language classes are getting the best lessons possible." She's not only a great coworker, she's a great friend. She lends an ear to listen and a shoulder to cry on, she's comic relief when she doesn't even know she needs to be. In fact, they adore her so much that I think they have systematically blocked all TRS retirement information from reaching her. Ms. Rodriguez is also a principal's teacher. Whenever there's a challenge to be overcome, I know Ms. Rodriguez can handle it with a smile, even if that means teaching grades 1, 2, and 3 at the same time, or having the largest homeroom class on campus, or star tutoring for other grade levels, or even teaching 150 hours of summer school each June. But most importantly, Ms. Rodriguez is a student's teacher. She said her favorite part of the job is seeing the growth in struggling students who become independent learners and then seeing independent learners soar and discover knowledge of their own. This is evident to the parents of her students as well, many of whom have seen multiple children go through her class. One parent told me she has had three kids in Ms. Rodriguez's class, and she always holds them to the highest standards. Ms. Rodriguez is also a huge Disney fan and frequents Disney World, we are thankful she brings Disney magic to her classroom each day. It is an honor for me to announce Ms. Rodriguez as Florisville North Teacher of the Year. (Cheering)
Ms. Rodriguez, thank you so much for everything you do at North Elementary. If we get y'all to wait right over there, we have one more group we want to introduce. So now we'll have Ms. Angela Garcia from South Elementary to introduce our Teacher and Parent Professional of the Year.
So, good evening, Dr. Odom, Board of Trustees, and the great FISD community. Tonight, I am proud and honored to represent, or sorry, present to you our Florisville South Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jane Bobbitt. Mrs. Bobbitt was nominated by her peers for her commitment and compassion to the teaching profession. Mrs. Bobbitt has taught in elementary education for nine years, four of those being at Florisville South Elementary. She has had a great privilege of teaching kindergarten, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. Through her experience, she remains firm in her belief that if you can teach kindergarten, you can teach anything. Jane grew up with two public educators as parents, who are also here today, so thank y'all for being here, and she believes that education was one of the utmost importance in her home. The mentality in which she was brought up instilled the love for learning, and that is what she loves most about teaching today, the ability to engage students in adventures and successes and the joy of learning things. Mrs. Bobbitt recently received her Master's Degree in Teacher Leadership, where she has discovered the best practices and skills to support both students and teachers alike. Currently, she is an ESL teacher, a math teacher, teaching both 2nd and 3rd grade students in our dual-language program. In addition, she serves as a mentor coordinator at Florisville South Elementary and is embarking on receiving her principal certification. Jane's peers commended her for always going above and beyond, they also are grateful for her continued leadership on campus and for always offering support to new teachers and veteran teachers alike. Jane is a natural-born leader and is always looking for ways to serve her campus and community. Her peers are super proud of how she jumped in without hesitation to help serve our students in the dual-language program. She is always putting students' needs before her own and is willing to take risks. In fact, if you spend any time in Jane's classroom, you will find students celebrating their mistakes, because when mistakes are made, there's opportunity for learning. Jane, I cannot be more proud than to present you as our Florisville South Elementary Teacher of the Year. (Applause) All right, next, I am honored to present to you the Florisville South Paraprofessional of the Year, Mrs. Claudia Jenkins. Mrs. Jenkins was nominated by her peers for her huge heart and her commitment to students and staff at FSE. Mrs. Jenkins has been in education for six years, where she has served one year as a substitute teacher and five years as a paraprofessional at Florisville South. She is currently enrolled in school and working towards her Bachelor's in Education. Once she finishes with her Bachelor's degree and secures a teaching position, she wants to get her Master's in Special Education, and one day hopes to serve as a mentor to other new teachers. Mrs. Jenkins' favorite part of her job is the students. She loves building relationships with them and watching their potential grow, not just within the year that she gets to work with them, but the whole time that they're at Florisville South. She loves seeing students grow confidence within themselves and in their academic abilities. She works hard to help students celebrate their gains, no matter how big or small. She aspires to be the kind of teacher that makes learning fun and creates an environment where students can feel safe to reach out to her for whatever type of help that they need. Mrs. Jenkins' peers commend her for always going above and beyond for her students and her peers. She is also recognized for the great work she does to support students' academic success. Anytime you walk in the classroom, you can find Ms. Jenkins focused on leading a lesson, either with an individual student or a small group. She is also flexible and always willing to serve in whatever capacity we need her. Mrs. Jenkins is well respected by her peers and teachers. Claudia, I'm truly honored to present you as our Paraprofessional of the Year. (Applause)
Can we get all of our teachers and paraprofessionals of the Year back up to the front real quick?
Yes.
So, just so you know, Board Members, Community, we will be naming our winners for secondary and elementary teachers of the year at our employee banquet later this month, so that is top secret right now, and I think applications and all were due today, so we will be announcing that later, but that news is pending, so.
Real quick, I'd like to say, as a parent, I'm so happy, I can't say thank you enough, y'all teachers and paraprofessionals, for what y'all do, y'all are in our kids' lives so much, and they will remember that, and it's very inspiring for each and everyone. We don't get to see y'all like our kids do, and trust me, when they come home, they talk about this and that, and it's very humbling and makes me happy that y'all are, y'all are giving y'all's all. As a board member, working up here with Dr. Gilstrap and the administration, makes me proud that we have teachers like y'all, paraprofessionals like y'all, that do what y'all do, because I know it takes a lot of dedication, and y'all are truly the backbone of our schools. Without y'all, it doesn't work. So, I can't thank y'all enough for what y'all do and all y'all's time. Thank y'all very much.
(Applause) We'll take our paraprofessionals of the Year up here, and then we'll take that picture, and then we'll do our teacher.
(Inaudible)
(Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) (Laughter) (Inaudible) 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 (Laughter) (Laughter) (Inaudible) 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 We'll now recognize our FFA State Qualifiers. Marster Jarzombek, would you please come forward?
(Inaudible) 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 All right, we'll have Mr. Jarzombek come up with our first of multiple state qualifiers. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to come and talk about some of our successes that we've had this spring. In the spring, we have what the FFA calls career development events, and in these events, the kids participate in different activities that will then hopefully help them as they pursue life after high school. I have here the milk quality and products team, team members Kayla Drew, Hallie Orith, Peyton Jarzombek, Addison Peck, and Natalie Valdez. This team was second in district, fourth in area, and 18th at state. With this contest, these kids identify milk defects, and they do that by taste. They taste the milk, and they have to identify the different defects that are in the milk. They identify different types of cheese and different types of dairy and non-dairy products, and then they also take an exam. We've got a long history of success with this team. It's really cool whenever you start out the school year or start out the team year and you explain to the kids the shoes that they are asked to fill, and these kids did a great job. We've got a long history of success with this team. We've had this team for 12 years, we're state qualifier every single year. So, that's 12 years in a row we've been a state qualifier. (Applause) (Inaudible) 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 Okay, next group, we've got the livestock judging team. These kids here, team members Teva Filet, Cadence Orith, Bradley Muth, Thomas Schilick, and Tyler Moose. This group was also second in district, they were seventh in area and 26th at state. With this team, these kids are asked to place and grade cattle, sheep, goats, and pigs in different scenarios and things of that nature. They are asked to then also, in the grading part, to predict how those animals will hang on the rail whenever they are, go through the harvesting process. Another team we've got a lot of history with, a lot of history of success, 16th year we've qualified for state, and the third year in a row. (Applause)
Y'all wait right over there, we'll get the next group up.
Hello, this is the food science team for Florisville FFA. The team consisted of James Marlowe, Nicole Lee, Cambry Engel, and Caitlin Pateleke. This team placed first in Guadalupe Valley District, third in Area 7, and 11th in the state, missing the top 10 by a measly 2 points. At the state contest, this is an automatic state qualifying team. At the state contest, there were 42 teams and 160 individuals. Three of the team members are freshmen, and one of them, Caitlin, is a junior, and she was our eyes and ears, she was on the team last year, and without her, this team would not have been as successful as they were this year. She was like the co-coach. So that's the food science team.
I think we have one more group of FFA state qualifiers.
And this is flora culture, team consisting of Elise Frye, Caitlin Pateleki, Mackenzie Barnett, and Leila Kane. This team placed first in Guadalupe Valley District, third in Area Seven, and ninth in the state. Individual placings at area, Elise was the high point individual, Caitlin Pateleki was the eighth place individual. At the state contest, Mackenzie was the ninth place individual. I think that that speaks lots of words for this team, that they all have been in the top ten at numerous contests that they've competed at, and three of them were in the top ten at two of the biggest contests we went to this year, trading off spots. No one is the best one, they are all incredible. At the state contest, there were sixty-five teams and two hundred and fifty-one individuals, and in the state, there were over four hundred flora culture teams this year. This is also the first time that we've had a top-ten floral team. This is my first top-ten team ever.
First of all, thank y'all for y'all's dedication to the program for Florisville FFA. We'd like to just, y'all do an amazing job representing yourselves, the school, and what we want y'all to be in the future. To the seniors that are leaving, Brad, Cadence, Kayla, Teva, and Peyton, y'all have left this program better than when y'all came in. With the leadership and mentoring these younger folks, we appreciate y'all for what y'all do to the younger ones. Step up, continue doing what you're doing, and thank y'all for all y'all's contribution and commitment to the program.
I just want to say real quick to this group, y'all do a great job of representing Florisville community, Florisville ISD, Florisville FFA. Y'all go all over the state in pursuit of that. You put in time and hours of studying, preparing, not just in these events, but all the events throughout the year. We are successful at this because of the work that you put in and the sponsors put in. Don't ever take that for granted, though, because it just won't come easy. You've got to keep that up, and that's the life lesson you've got to keep going forward with, is what you've been doing to be successful, you've got to continue and get better at it all the time. So thank y'all very much for representing us. Everybody back it up here somehow.
Thank you so much. I'm going to miss it real bad.
Union members of the school board and Dr. Gilstrap, tonight's my privilege to introduce you to another outstanding member of our FISD athletic department, Gabby Perez. I don't normally do this, but I want to take just a few minutes to say a couple of things about Gabby. Gabby and I both share a love and passion for the game of golf. Gabby and I can both beat her dad at golf. That was for you, Gabe. But in all seriousness, Gabby is the model of what we all hope as coaches that our student athletes will become once they graduate. She's a hard worker, she is a perfect example of what a student athlete means, and she's a great example of when hard work and dedication pays off, which is going to culminate in her competing this month at the state golf tournament, a four-A golf tournament at Legends Golf Course in Marble Falls. So let me turn it over to her head coach, David Mur.
So a little bit of my thunder there, because one of the reasons just so proud of Gabby's accomplishment is it is the direct result of her hard work, her desire, and frankly, her leadership on the team. She was one of the captains this year for a reason. She leads through example, and I think this is one of the tenants that Florisville ISD tries to build within our students. Coach talked about her being just a model, not only as a student, but also as an athlete on the course. She was more than happy to help out any of the boys, any of the girls who needed assistance, who needed kind of look at it from a different way. You know, I had the fortune of meeting her when my son was a freshman. I wasn't coaching at the time, got to meet her and say, she's really good. Last year, I got to coach her for the first year and ended a little bit short. And so going into the season, she talked about, hey, what do you want? She goes, well, I want to play at the next level. I was like, okay, well, what do you got to do? Let's get to state. That was always our goal from day one for this season. And it wasn't always pretty, but again, that's a testament to Gabby's desire, her passion for her level of excellence in her performance. And so we're really excited to not only represent her and her family with her skills, but also represent the community, represent the school at the state tournament. She knows that a lot of eyes are on her, that I think she does well under pressure. And she's hoping to be, since she is the first female golfer representing Florisville at the state tournament, that just go out there and just represent us well. So Gabrielle Perez.
My family were golfers, my mother, my dad, me. I did, my first time on a golf course, I did sixteen shots to get the first hole. I was screaming, "Go!" She said, "That's okay, boy, come and play. Put whatever down on your score." I know the dedication that it takes, because my daddy helped run a golf course, and my mother, they both, like, it's a lot of self. You're out there, you're competing with yourself to get better. There's a lot of mental part of it that a lot of people think, oh, athletic. No, it's also mental. And you show that by your desire. Go to state, and you're going. And it takes a lot of practice, not only in a classroom or out in the field, you probably do it all the time. And that's what it takes to be the success that you are. Good luck.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I've got a passion for golf as well, and not just, whenever we say that Gabby's out there at the golf course all the time, it's not just the driving range, she's also waiting tables in the restaurant. She's working full-time. Whenever we say she's out there, she is out there all the time. She really committed herself to getting better, and she did it by putting in the effort to do it. So Gabby, thank you very much for representing us and our community, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
By the way, she has a double eagle in regals, probably. Two on a par-five.
Really?
Very good.
She rolled out for ninety-five yards.
All right, next we will have some community of character awards. Ms. Pellet, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon. On April the nineteenth, during second period, a student at Florisville High School had an episode of seizures during class time. Once the student hit the ground, Ms. Alavarez ran to her and got her into an appropriate position. She then asked Aiden Alcoser and Shanette Baxley to go get assistance from the nurse and the administration. I proceeded to, she proceeded to ask the entire class to wait in the hallway quietly and calmly as Ms. Kilabasso got the students to the library. Aiden and Shanette did an amazing job alerting the administration. They were extremely quick to react and assist. They stayed calm in a very intense situation, and they were able to provide pertinent information to administration, Mrs. Hayden, the school nurse, and the EMS men that were there. We want to thank Ms. Alavarez, Ms. Baxley, and Mr. Al, oh, sorry, he's not here, Alcoser, for assisting the student during the medical emergency. We are proud to have such courageous and swift-acting members of our community as a part of Florisville High School. Thank you.
Just real quick, as superintendent, passing out community of characters awards is something special because it shows the true character of our students and our staff whenever it comes to time of need. And each of you jumped into action and took it upon yourselves to calm a situation that could be chaotic. And that comes from not only training and being knowledgeable about what our procedures are, but also just about the character you have to be able to step in that moment. And so thank you very much for being the symbol of character that we expect and that we do everything we can to teach here at Florisville ISD. So thank you very much. Now, turn it over to Mr. Flair for a few more words.
Yeah, I just want to say to the students, you know, for listening to the teacher and reacting in that type of situation is not easy to do. A lot of people panic, they buckle under pressure. So it shows a lot of character, how to react in a emergency situation, do what you're told. As a board member, I'm extremely proud to have students like that, and I think it's awesome that we just have y'all representing Florisville, y'all step up every day. For Ms. Alvarez, for the quick reaction getting Aubrey, not just only that delegating while you're handling a situation, that's also awesome. That's not easy either, a lot of times people panic. And to me, it just shows a direct character and reflection for your students to react. That comes from you in the classroom, so I want to thank you.
One, two. One, two. And I'm going to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your help today. It's not easy to be a child. Stay home, do what you're told.
Thank you.
Good health. It's inspiration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Here we go. How's it your birthday?
She can walk off, it's not her turn.
Ms. Petrie, do you have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
And then move on to reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap starts off with superintendent report. Board members, at your place, you do have a superintendent report for May of 2023. Amazing, exciting time in Florisville ISD. We've got several events and activities coming up to recognize and celebrate our students and our staff. We've already seen evidence of that here this evening, and we're going to do that in some formal banquets. Actually, starting next week, we have Dreammakers and FFA banquets. Later in the month, we do have our employee banquet, so if you are able to be at any of those, please RSVP with Alyssa so that you can make sure we have you and potentially a guest that want to attend. We also have middle school, high school band concerts coming up. We've got multiple playoffs with baseball and softball coming up this week. So I don't want to start naming them all because I'm going to forget some. The list is included in your packet as well. That's, again, we try to add to that and update that as much as we can with locations and times, but please let us know if you have any questions about those. They're just too numerous to name. Obviously, we also have star and DOC testing coming up this week, but that's beside it. We do have a culminating event on Friday, May the 26th. Graduation is scheduled at the stadium. Board members, we ask that you be there at 7:15 in the Tigers Den. We will have all of the gowns ready to go. We will lead the class of 2023 onto the field at 7:15. So if you can, please be there at that time. We do have a proposed graduation list. If you have not had an opportunity to see Alyssa with that, to go through there and just see if there's any particular ones that you need to or you feel like you want to present the diploma to, we can make sure we make those arrangements. This past month, our long-range planning committee held their third meeting as they continue their work. Again, what they're working on is a presentation to the board, not a bond election, but just a presentation of how we feel or how the community feels that you may potentially want to move forward. Substantial progress was done, but a fourth meeting is needed. So the board, excuse me, the committee will meet on Wednesday, June the 7th, back at the high school, and that meeting will be at 6 o'clock. We will have a, fingers crossed, we will have a recommendation or a presentation for the board in late June. So it won't be that regular June board meeting, it'll be the one at the end of the month. Did email everyone this past week regarding some committee meetings, so we do have a policy and a finance committee meeting. The policy committee will be meeting to review DEC Local, which is regarding sick bank and bereavement. That meeting is next week. And then the finance committee will meet the week after, and they are going to look at continuing to develop the 2023-24 budget. Obviously, there are some things that are up in the air with the legislative session continuing regarding the budget and finances, but we are currently building it with priority given to employee raises and time. And so that's what we're building it on with no changes or no new money. And so we're having to really make some tough decisions should the legislature come through, depending on how they word some of those things, we can adjust. If all else fails and the legislative session goes into a special session and they do not get anything approved, we will have to adopt a budget by the end of June, with an understanding that once the legislature is through, we may have to make a budget amendment based on that new legislation that gets approved. That's kind of a big question mark on that, but we are having to make plans. We want to make sure that we are ready to go at July 1 with a new budget in place to the best of our ability. So just a reminder, talking about June, June is a busy month for the board. We will have a regular meeting on Monday, June the 5th, and that's in order to just conduct our regular business. We will have a budget workshop on Monday, June the 12th, so mark your calendar for the week later. Monday, June the 12th will be our budget workshop for the entire board, including our compensation plan. This information may be amended, once again, depending on legislation. Later that week, on Thursday and Friday, June the 15th and 16th, we'll be in San Antonio for the Tazby Summer Leadership Institute. I believe everyone except for one is registered for that, and so we'll all be attending that for Thursday and Friday of that week. Finally, we'll have our special meeting at the end of June, on Wednesday, June the 28th. That'll be at the end of our fiscal year. That will allow us to, one, make any final budget amendments for the current budget, and also to approve the 23-24 annual budget at that last meeting. It'll also include any typical business from the month of July, so by having all of these meetings in June, we're going to give you July off. So we will not have a regular meeting in July at this time. Let's see, tonight is the first, or today is the first of May, so you, in your packet, you will find limited financial reports in there. That's just due to the fact that it's the first of the month, and so our business office did not have an opportunity to gather all that. They wanted me to make sure you knew that. We will be presenting those later this month or in the next meeting next month. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we would be more than happy to take y'all around to some of these classrooms that we've renovated in this building for our early childhood center. It is still a work in progress, but substantial progress has been made. So if you haven't had an opportunity to walk through some of these rooms and see how they're renovated, some question marks were out there, but as teachers have seen it, it is really looking nice. The rooms are in great condition. We just need to get all the furniture over here after school's out and get the technology installed, things like that. Also included this month is our And so, our business office did not have an opportunity to gather all that. They wanted me to make sure you knew that. We will be presenting those later this month or in the next meeting next month. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we would be more than happy to take y'all around to some of these classrooms that we've renovated in this building for our early childhood center. It is still a work in progress, but substantial progress has been made. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to walk through some of these rooms and see how they're renovated, some question marks were out there, but as teachers have seen it, it is really looking nice. The rooms are in great condition. We just need to get all the furniture over here after school's out, get the technology installed, things like that. Also included this month is our resignations and hires. We do not have any hires this month. However, I did have one board member asking and just inquiring, rightfully so, about the length of our resignation list for this month. So, so far this year, going into next year, we've had twenty-two resignations. If you recall, this year, we had over sixty new employers, new teachers at our new teacher orientation. And so, resignations and people getting out of the field of education is obviously across the nation, it's not just a Florisville issue. However, I will say, this month is in particular, the list is a little longer because we did issue contracts. Some of those teachers that, knowing they're gonna resign for whatever reason, they do wait to get that contract, and then they turn around and resign it. Or, yes, I've got my contract that reminds me I need to do that. So, we typically see an influx this month with resignations, similar to what we do in, just because it is in February is when our due date is to get the days benefits. So, we usually get a lot of resignations at that time for people that are retiring. If they notify us in a certain amount of time, they get paid for some leave days that they have remaining. It's in our policy. So, we typically get some resignations by that date as well. So, those are the two reasons for that. But just wanted to draw your attention to that and let you know that we are fully aware of that, and it is something. After the school year is out, we will come back in June and give a presentation to the board about where we are with that, and any open positions, what our attrition rates are, and any kind of openings we have. So, that information will be coming in June as well. Board members, there are a few other updates there, but again, I would point you to the list of events on the back page that is attached, because I just don't want to leave any of them off. Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Next on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items on the consent agenda? So, board members, I will say that we have two items on this one that are not typically on there. One is a fifteen-hundred-dollar donation to the girls' soccer team. Since that does exceed the one-thousand-dollar limit per policy, the board is required to or needed to approve accepting that donation. And then also, we do have a national qualifier, as we were recognized last month, who will be going to Florida this summer to compete. And since it is out-of-state travel, it is, out-of-state travel must be approved by the board. So, that is listed under consent agenda as well. All right, any questions or discussions? If not, the administration recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Reed makes the motion, and Ms. Shalva seconds it. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Next action item is to consider approval of Disciplinary Alternative Education Program. The birthday girl's already up there. Yes. Inter-local agreement with Fall City, Karn City, Kennedy, and Poe ISDs for the 2023-2024 school year. So, we would make tonight the Lindsay Angle Show. I asked if we needed to sing, she said no.
Maybe she was talking about you, Dr. Odom.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and members of the board. And tonight, we're bringing to you the agreement for the Disciplinary Alternative Education Program for the 23-24 school year. The district has been working with four other districts, those being Fall City, Karn City, Kennedy, and Poe, to develop a new inter-local agreement for the DAEP services. This agreement was developed with input from the other districts, Mr. Rios and Dr. Gilstrap and myself. The information was shared about the actual cost of operating the program. This agreement is different from those in the past in that, in the past, the fees were based on URL size. This, and then anything over a certain number of seats were charged to the districts. Nobody ever really went over their seats. So, this year, we kind of relooked at it, kind of looked at average placements, and looked and developed a new plan for that. So, there is a base fee based on your URL classification that you'll pay no matter what, just to become a member of the club. And then, anybody that, any student that's assigned to DAEP will pay, the district will pay forty dollars per student per day whenever they're assigned to the center. So, we have gotten signed agreements. We did offer this also to Southside, they did decline. So, therefore, we've got four districts, five, including ourselves, that have all signed and returned their agreements to us. So, I believe those agreements are in your packet, if you have any questions. If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the Disciplinary Alternative Education Program inter-local agreement as presented.
I move and accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Mucho makes the motion, and Mr. Flair seconds it. Any questions, other questions? If there are none, you accept the administration's recommendation. All right, Lindsay Angle also has a report to consider approval of purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, in the middle school cafeteria, there are currently three refrigerated merchandisers in the serving line that are being utilized. They are aging, and this is a quote to replace those three units at a price of fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. The district did receive three quotes for those, and the low bid was to Mission Restaurant Supply, who we have done business within the past. Because this is using child nutrition funds, it is not using local funds, we have to submit those bids to Texas Department of Agriculture for their approval for anything that's an individual item over five thousand dollars. So, these merchandisers, as you can see in the quote, are close to eighteen thousand dollars apiece. So, therefore, TDA, we had to submit those to TDA. We did attach their approval that we received on April the seventeenth. So, if there are no questions, are there any questions?
Do they pay any toward that at all?
No, but we, it's all child nutrition funds, which we, that's the one fund that we always have plenty of excess in that we have to spin down to be able to. And most of our equipment is in good shape, so there's not a lot of replacement there, but these, I believe, are over ten years old, so they are needing to be replaced.
Further questions?
If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the purchase over fifty thousand dollars as presented.
Mr. President, I move to accept administration's recommendation.
Ms. Shalva makes the motion, and Ms. Shalva second it. Any other questions? All in favor, let me know by raising your hand.
Thank you very much.
We have now concluded our agenda for this meeting. Is there any further business? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-eight AM.